Oh, the polite. Yeah, that's all picture.
Get rolling and get done. I gotta take my wife to eat for her birthday. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council, for May the 11th, 2021. I want to thank everybody for attendance, so we'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Alvedras?
Here.
Sanchez?
Here.
Setzer?
Yep.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Dunham?
Present.
Agenda item number three. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I forgot. I went right into it. I forgot the flag salute prayer. You'd think I'd know that by now. Okay, we'll back up. Is Pastor Craig Shepherd here from the Azren Church? Well.
No wonder you skipped it.
That's why I skipped. Everybody's standing there. And we'll say a quick prayer and then the flag salute. Thank you, Mr. Flag. Lord, as we enter this evening of doing the business of the city, which is also your business, please guide and direct all of us and help us to do the best and make the best decision for the citizens of Guyman so that we can continue to serve them and make Guyman a wonderful place to live and grow a family. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Alvedras, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, that's the worst mistake I make tonight. That's not good. All right, agenda item number three. It's an honor to present Guyman's newest canine officer, Officer Riggs. I will ask his handler and any other folks in the police department to come up and introduce him. Boy, wow, he's a fine looking. He's kind of nervous, it appears. Chief, would you like to expand on Riggs? Tell us his history?
This is our newest canine. We, the vendor that we used for our previous canine, he doesn't sell canines, train canines anymore. So, we kind of had to go out and look for a new canine vendor and we found Tony Smith and he's out of Arkansas and he's trained canines for years. He books, sort of master recognized canine handlers, canine behavior. And we chose his kennel and this is Canine Riggs. He's about a two-year-old, roughly two-year-old. Yeah, he's almost two-year-old Malinois. He came from another one, correct? Or a Holland? He gets his dogs from several different places. So, he actually speaks Dutch. Some of the dogs he sells come from Mexico, so he's French. He'll even speak German, French. Luckily, our, most of our canines that we've had in the past speak Dutch. So, he got the, he didn't have to learn anything. He didn't have to get a British owner or anything. But he, we're pretty impressed with him and Sergeant Hamilton, I believe, two weeks. Canine handler's rule pretty much follows two weeks. And we're looking forward to having a good relationship from our department.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you for allowing us to be doing our program.
Still acts like a pup. And welcome to the fold, Riggs. Yeah. We might not want to clap for you, though. I don't know. Oh, yeah. Just welcome.
He is trained, he is a full-trained control dog. He does narcotics protection. He's a passive dog. So, when he finds it, when you watch him, they have changed behavior, but the final notice is he'll sit and stick his nose on pretty intent. And he also is a tracking dog, a track, and he also handles protection dogs, protection handling and by his behalf. He's what we call a full controller dog.
Awesome.
Do you guys have any questions?
Did you find any challenges from this, between this dog and the last dog?
He's a Malinois.
Yeah, he's a Malinois. They had, and then, there's different training times. On the last kennel, it was getting a little different type of training. So, I've been a handler for 2007 and I felt like I could handle that too. So, I'm just trying to fix that.
German Shepherds are typically a little slower paced and they're more methodical. But they're prone to hip displays so their service life isn't as long. Malinois, you can use them longer, but they are, they are a missile or, I mean, they're very active and he is high energy. So, training, training them is a little more difficult because they're so high-speed and stuff. And his, his previous dog, many years ago, before poker, was also a very high-strung Malinois. So, he's getting to relive what it's like to have a canine.
Well, good.
Congratulations.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time to get to work.
Well, he just.
He's ready for it.
Yeah.
A little too much coffee.
Is that how you look on work?
No. Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Any public comments and announcements? All right, agenda item number five. Oh, Robert, Mr. Edmair, come on up. Bring, bring, bring Sue with you. Bring the brains of them.
I just wanted to apologize for not being here at the meeting in April. We got a brief interview to do for college and for a long-term school. Thank you for what all of you did. We've been good without you. It means a lot to the program. It's a very much, very different thing.
Well, you all are more than welcome. I said you all are more than welcome for that. We're honored that we get to be able to help sponsor you.
The honor, the honor. We didn't do the proper thing.
All right. Okay, any other public comments and announcements? Okay, agenda item number five is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item six is discussion and action to approve ordinance number 873, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, for the code of ordinances of the city of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Yes, ma'am?
So, this is for Township 3 North Range, 15 East Section, 31 LS Slots 1 and 2, Block 1. So, the landowner came in to, for an application to rezone from a C2 highway commercial to an R1 single-family residential. The reason, the reason for the rezone is that the lot owner can put a modular home on the property. The zoning is C2 both in our 1994 and 2018 zoning map, and the future land use is high-density. The reason why we approved and we, and also the board approved was because it was originally and has been since as far back as we could look in our maps, it has been residential. But when we did our zoning, it was moved to a C2. So, the, the owner there has a home or had a home on there, had to demolish it, and they're putting in a modular home, not a mobile home, a modular home that was set on slab.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 873. May I need the zone?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
I'll make a motion. Would you declare this an emergency?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to declare an emergency.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and action to approve resolution number 2106, establishing the number of members of the Guyman Parks Board and appointment of a new member. Commentary and resolution is attached. So, I believe that.
Do you have? So, during, we've been discussing this quite a bit during the Parks Board. Currently, whenever they merge with the Tree Board, they establish a 10-member board and able to, to encompass the both boards together, like all the current active members. But currently, for the last year or so, we've been having an issue getting a quorum. So, it would have to consist of six people. So, we're asking, and they've asked to knock it down to seven people to help them with their cancellation rate due to not being able to meet a forum. And they would also like to approve Anita Helms as a new board member.
Do I have any questions or discussion or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2106, establishing the number of members of the Guyman Parks Board. Second.
I would assume we do. Probably should. Is that right, Mr. Peterson?
Do the appointment separately?
No, that you can do in one motion.
Oh, okay. And then to also appoint Anita Helms? Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and action to authorize the removal of Shawn Livingston and Charlene Whale and add Kim Peterson, Mayor, to the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority, and Guyman Airport Authority.
This is just a routine housekeeping item. The banks have been requesting, basically, council approval to remove the people that are no longer with the city for one reason or another and to add Mr. Mayor Peterson to that, to those accounts as the signature. And this just allows us to pass on some information to them, saying that y'all are aware of it and approve of it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the authorization, the removal of Shawn Livingston and Charlene Whale, and add Mayor Kim Peterson to the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, the Guyman Utilities Authority, the Guyman Industrial Authority, and the Guyman Airport Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and action to approve the location for Guyman's first off-leash dog park.
This is something the Parks Board has been working on for well over a year. Their first meeting was July of 2020 where we officially discussed kind of where we wanted to, where we would like the location to be. We did receive a grant for the dog park. So, I did an assessment and I think I brought it to council and then we went back and did another assessment. So, after, there was one that we had voted on a few months ago that the Parks Board was extremely excited about, but then there were some issues with utility lines that I wanted to speak with staff before we continue on. Even after continuing speaking with staff, I brought the report to the Parks Board and they approved. We did do a public, we tried to do a public hearing, but because of COVID, that wasn't able to do. We weren't able to do so. But we did do some online forums as well as a questionnaire and all that information was on our website as well as in your package. So, they, they approved no man's land for the future dog park. It will be our first off-the-leash dog park. It's a little over an acre and we will have two second, two sections, a big dog park and a small dog. So, small dog being anything over 25 or 30 pounds. They've already got the rules set. They're already starting to do fundraising for the possibility. We just need a, an okay on the location. And Mr. James here to answer any questions.
Yeah, you know, there's four or five locations discussed and I think you can see all those in your packet. And when you, when you look at all the factors and the most logical place to have it, it was behind the no man's land park there. And because of the parking, the utilities are accessible there. It, there's, there's other entertainment, you know, with the skate park being local, gives the opportunity for visitors coming through town to stop, see it and utilize it as well. We think it's just a great location and I think the fundraising is going to go really well. I think also in your packet, there's some sponsorship levels that we can, you know, try to get on the local level as well to help support this.
My, one question. I, when I read through that and we, we talked about it with the soccer complex, but that park was built with the USDA and Department of Tourism grant years ago. Will change in the utilization of that one park, part of the park, could that affect in the future?
No, that's still considered, it's still considered a public access park.
Okay. And I did have, oh, I had one, one, one person from the city that had some reservations about the utilities under that area of fence that made in and access. It had some, I guess, sprinkler breaks or something. I don't know.
Well, that's, that is, that could possibly be an issue at some point in time and it would, would require us to do additional work. If, if those utility lines should break and we have to go in there and dig it up, we may have to take down the fence. But other than that, I don't know that it's going to be a huge issue with the location. I mean, the utility lines being through there makes it not ideal, but when you weigh that against the cost to put it in other locations where we would have to run utility lines to the park, you know, those, those benefits outweigh the costs of going somewhere else.
Yeah, I was at a couple of those meetings and it seemed like all the other locations, it just meant, this location made more sense and was a little bit more feasible as far as the finances go.
And they go landwatering the USDA grants. It was kind of for the skate park and so all we're doing is enhancing. I did call and verify to make sure that it was going to be handled up in the danger. We had the city might have to do a conversion because I'm doing the landway stuff.
So, on top of the grant, there's already a donor, though, right?
Yes. So, we didn't, we don't have, that's just the grant that built the park originally. So, I wanted to make sure that we were all in our bylines. But yes, we do have a donor already and we had interest in donating. We had somebody saying we were doing something that might, to contribute. So, as soon as we get the location down, I kind of wanted to get that down before we run out and start asking for money and know what works out.
Yeah, we've got several avenues outlined to get additional funding to finish this park. But, but just the location and everything and the convenience just way overwhelms any other location we could come up with.
Good. Any other discussion, questions?
I want a motion to approve the location for Guyman's first off-leash dog park.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and action to authorize the mayor to sign an inter-agency agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Commentary is attached. I believe this is an annual thing we do for funding. Is that correct?
Yes. This is basically coming from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. They have received some money that is going from the, I think it actually came out of the second, well, the crisis funds that came to ODOT out of the last round of COVID money that's going to support rural public transportation in the amount of about $63,727. And what we need is the mayor to be able to sign the inter-agency agreement between ODOT and the city of Guyman to receive those funds.
Okay. Any questions?
And these funds will go toward the, toward the, the use of these funds will be in the transportation department at the ride to help enhance those facility, those vehicles. They put some equipment in it that we may have to put into it.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion to grant access to, oh, wait, sorry, to authorize the mayor to sign the inter-agency agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Discussion and action to grant an access permit, permit to SL Glidewell et al. for city of Guyman property along US Highway 64.
The, the, the rep, the representative for the estate, Mr. Corey Hicks, brought this to the city probably about a month ago requesting access or for us to grant an access across our property. The landlord, the tenant, the owner of the property has kind of now gotten landlocked with some.
Mr. Manager, I, I had a, I had a message from Mr. Hicks today that he's withdrawing that he would like to have that matter postponed so that the council wouldn't need to act on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Didn't know about that.
So, will Mark?
Make a motion to table?
I would just mark as no action taken.
Okay.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and action to approve the fire department's application for two Oklahoma Emergency Response Systems Stabilization and Improvement Revolving Fund, OERSSIF, grant in the amount of $1,000, $158,425 to re-chassis, to re-chassis two ambulances and authorizing the city manager to compose a letter stating the benefit to the citizens of Guyman. Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, this is a grant that's offered to ambulance services throughout the state of Oklahoma. We did apply for it last year and we were not successful, but it's come up again. So, we're trying to apply for it again. In our budget this year, we had set aside $135,000 towards the re-chassing of one of our ambulances because it's time to start updating our ambulances so that we can keep them on the streets. So, when this grant opportunity came up, I looked at that and what we could do with that money that we had already set aside with this grant and taking that, combining it together to try to possibly get two ambulances done. And it would actually come out to a lesser cost to the city. I have updated the, I was still waiting on some quotes when we wrote the agenda item. So, Sunday night, the quotes finally all came in. So, the actual total grant request would be $159,500. And then the actual amount encumbered by the city would be $125,103. So, it's a little bit less than the $135 that we had set aside. We are also looking at utilizing $50,000 that the county has offered to provide for the purchase of an ambulance. So, we'd look, look at combining that together and that provides us over a 50% match for, for funding for this grant, which looks really good on the grant application when we can provide a, a significant portion of the grant funds towards that. So, this total project, we'd have two ambulances. And then in addition to that, there are some other grant requirements for stabilizing and improving, including things that we already pay for, like EMS provider education, opportunities for working together with other agencies in the Oklahoma Panhandle. And so, we would include some of those costs that we already pay for in the grant to help us get, not only get a better score, but also to help us improve our, our matching funding. So, we're looking at remounting Medic 1 and Medic 2. And what that entails is we take the box that we currently have, the ambulance box, we put it on a new chassis. We're looking at the Ford F-550 four-by-four chassis and then refurbishing that unit so that basically we have a, a brand-new truck, but it costs us less than the, the cost of an actual new, new ambulance.
We had originally budgeted to re-chassis Medic 2 with the city's funds and this will just allow us to get a, like Spencer said, this is, it kind of allows to get two for the price of one. So, it'll take, it postpones our purchase a little bit. If we, if we receive the grant, which we think we will get notification on toward the end of June, we, and we are successful in getting grant funds, then we will place the order for one truck now or in June or we do both, both of them? I forgot.
We'll probably place the order for both trucks. Payment is done on delivery, but then I would work with them to schedule the, the remounts so that we only had one truck going out at a time to be remounted. And then when that one came back, we'd get the other one down there to be remounted. We would be on kind of a tight schedule, which is why we'd go ahead in June and look for the, the approval to go ahead and, and order both trucks because that way we'd be, we could be, get it scheduled to where they were both done before the June of '22 deadline. Right now, Frazier is about eight to 10 months out in building ambulances. They're just that backed up with orders and that's universal along all the different manufacturers. There's just such a demand right now.
That is across the board. I mean, we're still waiting on a trash truck we were worth last year.
Okay.
And that's been over a year ago now. So.
Any questions, discussion?
So, this is only the second time we've applied for this grant, then?
This will be, I think, the fourth time we've applied, somewhere in there. This will be the second time I've applied for it. I took over as EMS chief last March. We have received the grant one time in the past, but this will be probably the fourth or fifth time that we've actually applied for the grant.
And are we moving forward with both of these purchases, even if we don't get the grant?
If we don't get the grant, we're back down to one.
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
So, we're not, we, the only thing that will happen is we're delaying our purchase a little bit longer. The worst-case scenario is that we're back down to where we originally were going to be during our budget process.
Got it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application from the fire department for two Oklahoma Emergency Response Systems Stabilization and Improvement Revolving Fund for a grant in the amount of $158,425 to re-chassis two ambulance and authorizing city manager to compose a letter stating the benefit to the citizens of Guyman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and action to approve Ag Solutions LLC's application for aerial applicator operating permit at the airport.
And I've asked some of the airport board members to attend, just in case they could answer some questions that you may have. And Sheila's going to present the item.
So, in our board, in our May board meeting, we discussed Ag Solutions LLC as a spray operator at the Guyman Municipal Airport. We typically approve these in December for the January, for the, for the fiscal year. But they did present us with all of the credentials from Ag Solutions, a copy of the commercial pilot license, medical certificate, operating certificate, and certificate of insurance. We did enforce a lease. That way, it can, they will have to give us a list of any of the chemicals that they'll be using, as well as we put a contingency if they bring any fuel that is, and they don't purchase it from us, that there is a five cent cost on the fuel per gallon. Mr. Jason's here if you have any questions.
Do I have any questions for Jason or anything else on this?
Was there any concerns as far as the chemicals? Is there any concerns as far as the chemicals?
So, as far as we're aware, they're not being used, the other persons aren't using.
Okay.
Nothing unique or special about them. The only thing that'll be different on this one is it's a new request. We've not serviced them before, and so we're locating them on a slightly different area of the field because we didn't have any space in the other area. I know we've talked about this several times. It's in our twenty-year plan. Eventually, we're going to have to open up that west side of the airport to move all our ag sprayers over there. That's the plan. And this, if we keep having more of these sprayers show up, we're going to have to. We're just kind of running out of ramp space at work.
I think it's like a 40 by 40 piece of lot that we, if I'm correct? Yeah, we leased a 40 by 40 piece of land. That's where they'll store their chemicals, but they have to build a foundation.
It's all set up to be temporary as far as what they're bringing in. The foundation, all that's permanent, obviously, but they're going to haul all their chemical and things in in temporary tanks, and then they take it back out at the end of the season. The only thing that'll be there semi-permanently besides the foundation is they are putting in a separately metered water tap, which I think they've already worked out with the cities. They don't have water available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve AG Solutions LLC application for aerial applicator operating permit.
One second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion and update, and any action deriving from the discussion on the update and progress of the Nash Soccer Complex.
Okay, well, what I wanted to do is kind of bring you up to date on where we're at on the soccer complex and what we have left to do. Right now, the soccer complex has not been turned over to us. It's still under, it's officially still under construction and still under the control of the contractor. A couple of things that need to be finished before they turn that over to us is, one, there was an electrical line going to one of the lights, one of the light poles, that was cut during construction, during the installation of a sidewalk. And somehow, when it did that, it energized the pole, so they're working to get that fixed. That in and of itself is a safety hazard, and would make it where we wouldn't open up the soccer complex to the public because of that. If that pole were, if that light were to get inadvertently turned on for some reason and somebody got electrocuted, it would be a bad deal. The other things that we do need to purchase, we're working right now on getting the entry archway, getting it designed and getting it under construction, and getting that where it's worked out. Some of the things that we have left to buy, we need to buy a mower with a bagger on it for clippings because we need to mow it, but we need to catch those clippings. We don't have any mowers with baggers on them right now because we don't want grass growing out there on that turf field that we'd have to try to figure out how to clean up. We need to get our benches bought, or bleachers bought, and benches and trash receptacles. Now, one of the things that has been suggested, and kind of gauge the council's thoughts on this, the benches and the trash receptacles were budgeted for about $20,000. But we, it has been suggested that that would be a good way for some of the local businesses, the smaller local businesses, or something that they could be a part of this, is let them, you know, sponsor a bench or sponsor a trash receptacle, and their name could then be similar, like the benches, similar to what they've done out here on Main Street. Their names could be put on those benches as a sponsor of the soccer complex. Or we could just buy them. But again, we've got about $20,000 slated for that. Our bleachers, we need, I've been working with Pete to get the bleachers that we need. We've got about $60,000 allocated out for bleachers. The cost estimate I have on the archway, entry arch, and to get the, it'd be about a, the pillars would be eight to 10 foot tall at the top. It'd be at the top of the current fence with the archway over that, on the entryway going in from the school parking lot side. That's got an estimated cost of about $90,000. To date, we've collected about $2.9 million in pledges and donations. We have about $480,000 left to pay Multicon. And we've got, again, the cost for the bleachers, benches, trash receptacles, et cetera, at about $170,000. And we've got one point, roughly $1.8 million in cash investments for the complex. That's kind of where we are at in getting those facilities ready to open. The concession stand needs a couple of things. I don't have prices on them yet. We need to get an ice machine and a refrigerator in there. I don't expect that's going to be a lot of money. I mean, a refrigerator, we're probably going to be able to buy for under $1,000. Ice machine, maybe a little bit more. But the big question that we have as far as getting to where we're opening is, how are we going to operate the facility? We've talked on several different avenues. We've talked about hiring additional staff to operate that facility. That additional staff could probably, could be utilized to help fill other facilities that we may have, to bring in, sell tax dollars and hotel motel tax dollars and such, things such as that. We don't have staff currently on the payroll that I think would be a good fit for that position, so we would be looking at hiring that out, hiring somebody for that. Now, the other thing would be to, we could contract with an outside agency. I had a conversation with an outsider, with a gentleman that operates the Amarillo Netflix today, and then there's some other folks that have shown maybe a little bit of interest in operating that facility. That would be a seasonal thing. We would have to, we would have to develop an agreement with them on what our expectations were to outline what, the way we wanted to go. And I guess really on that, I'd like to have some discussion with the council on what is your preference? I mean, because I can go either way. I just want, I just want to know that I'm going the way you want us to go. The other thing is, we do have a list of recommended items that the Parks Board has made and had a meeting not too long ago with Ms. Davis, I think she's out of Coach Davis, yeah, she's here, about what was needed. One of the big things that is needed on the complex is netting along the fence, the fence road between the highway and the ballpark. It would be real easy for some, for an adult or somebody that is really good at soccer to kick that ball over the eight-foot fence we have and into oncoming traffic. Well, there we have, again, we have another safety issue. I would venture to say if a soccer ball comes across and hits the windshield of a semi-truck, that guy's going to veer off some way, and whether or not he veers off into the field and the houses next to us, across the road, or veers off into the soccer complex and the school, I don't know, but that's going to be, that's an issue we need to try to figure out how to address.
Yeah, and all of us soccer players are a little offended you guys didn't think we could kick that far, just a little offended.
But, and then there's some additional fencing that has been, they feel is needed. That would be along the, one of the turf fields is not completely fenced off, and they feel that field ought to be completely fenced off, and that would, and to fence off the, have a fence and netting to prevent the soccer ball from going into the playground equipment that's there, because that, again, could be a safety issue with balls being kicked over into the playground, hitting a small, hitting a child, and knocking them off the playground equipment, or just knocking them down. There could be issues there. The, there is the need to secure the perimeter of the facility, go ahead and get that fenced And then, the other recommendation is to go ahead and complete the concrete walking trail around the facility. Right now, it goes about halfway around the facility and stops where we're currently fenced, and that would be to complete that circle. And with that, I kind of open it up for discussions and answer any questions that you guys may have or may have been getting. And surely between Councilman Setser, Councilwoman Sanchez, Coach Davis, we can get all those questions, any questions answered that you may have.
What about our turf maintenance?
We, what about it? We've got machinery as part of the, as part of the purchase of the turf to help, we've got some machinery that will help keep that turf in good condition. Our staff has been, our current Parks staff has been trained on it. Now, they haven't had the opportunity to go out and use it since they were trained, and that has been a few months. So, there may be a need to kind of have a refresher done on that, but we do have the equipment, well, most of the equipment, and the training to operate that equipment to keep our fields in good shape.
So, it seems like the discussion on this has gotten stagnant over the last couple of months. I know that we were saying, we were talking about the problems that needed to be addressed with the contractors three months ago. So, what's taken them so long to fix the pole?
It's, my understanding is, the contractor is basically having, having a, his subcontractors are bickering on who's supposed to fix it, is kind of the gist of what I'm getting. And, you know, the guy that installs the lighting said, hey, we installed it right, we did it right, your concrete guy came out and cut it, he needs to fix it. Concrete guy's going, hey, I don't know how to fix it, it needs to be the lighting guy.
So, is there not a penalty associated with being so late on this contract?
Well, the penalties that would have been done, would have been, come in place if they were substantially, if they were not substantially finished. I think the way the contract, the way this facility is now, they're substantially finished. We just have a few items that we need to get cleaned up before I would feel comfortable opening up the fields. There's other, there's a couple of other little things that, punch list items that we need to get them out here to fix, but they're not good deals. You know, there's, the air conditioning needs to be bolted to, the outside unit, air conditioning unit, needs to be secured to the pad. There's a water valve that is to the concession stand that's in the ground, and the valve is open, so some, it will accumulate trash, or a kid could possibly step in it. I want a lid on it. There's some of that stuff, but they're substantially finished with the fields. So...
So, is there any way we could like just flag those areas off so people don't go there and then play?
No, not with the, not with the soccer, not with the lighting.
Well, I'll get kicked if I don't ask that question, so...
Yeah, not with the lighting and the electrical issue that we have. I just, I, that's just such a huge safety item that I don't think it's worth opening up, and opening the city up for that liability.
Has the contractors or, has Kimley Horn ever, not Kimley Horn, has the subcontractors or the contractors given you a timeline on when they're going to fix that light issue?
I talked, I talked to them, I've been talking with them through Kimley Horn because I want them involved in the conversation. And we, I have not gotten a firm commitment on a timeline. Now, the past couple of weeks, I just haven't had a chance to follow up on it, but I do plan on following up with that, just to try to nail them down and say, hey, we need to get this thing fixed. Now, the other side to that is, we've got some, they've got, they've got a financial incentive to get it fixed. Right now, I'm holding invoices and payments until we're fixed. Like I said, we owe them roughly about $300 and, well, roughly, excuse me. $400 and, yeah, $480,000.
Maybe, maybe it would, if I could interject, maybe it'd be appropriate for our city attorney to write a couple of letters.
I would say...
That's why they post a performance bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be taken care of.
Yeah. One, I'm going to jump in. I've had some ideas, and y'all can, we can talk about it, but due to the fact we're in the position we are with the soccer complex that it's not completely done for, ready for use, but also, we've never really, I don't think, had a substantial conversation about usage of it, fees, whatever. So, I'm going to kind of piggyback on what you said, Mr. Dunham, but I think it would be appropriate, and what I'd like to do is appoint Mr. Setser and Mrs. Sanchez to form a committee, to start the working group of a committee, to bring in, with the council's approval, as they go forward, to bring in folks that are involved with soccer, have knowledge of the sport, know what's kind of going on. Let them work on some of these issues as far as the structure of how we're going to utilize the field. These are not practice fields, these are game fields, so there's got to be some really in-depth scheduling. We're going to have to discuss how, what personnel it's going to take to operate it, who's going to be there, because you can't just unlock the gates and say, there you go, folks. So, if that would be, if that would be with the council's approval, I'd like to do that. Put that on, we'll start it as a, as a, we'll get you started, then approve it, bring it up as an agenda item, approve that at the next meeting, if that would fit everybody's...
I really don't think we should bring somebody from the outside in. I think that our community has enough know-how and knowledge on how to run this complex, so forming a committee can definitely be to the benefit of our community in general and not having to pay an outside source to come and take our money and take it home with them. So, I think that's a great motion. We can form a committee and...
Then you guys can discuss amongst yourselves and work out the details, and then come back to us and say, this is our recommendations, and for, let us approve.
Sounds good.
Is that okay with everybody? Not very cushy.
Okay, so, just so I understand, Councilman Setser, Councilwoman Sanchez are going to solicit for a committee? How big is the committee?
We haven't said that yet. I'm going to let them work those ground rules up, let them pursue their thoughts, and then they will come back to us. We'll do that at the next meeting, we'll start that discussion. It's rather an informal working group because according to state statutes, less than a quorum of city council people can be on committees and work on together, so that's kind of under that guise. And they can, they can have discussions with Coach Davis and with other soccer individuals, maybe the soccer coach... maybe the soccer coaches from the colleges, other schools around.
Parks managers as well.
And end up get to involve our parks people and whatever. And they can make, I'm gonna let them kinda work their own guidelines and then we'll see what we wanna do at the next council.
Okay, so, um, at the next council meeting, if we, if, if, uh, Mr. Stetser and Ms. Sanchez work out and say, okay, we got five members, we wanna have on the, uh, we wanna have these, these five people as a committee, we bring that back to the council for approval?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna play a lot of it by here, but as they go forward, and if, let's say in the next month, if they come up with a, a, a concrete idea of what you wanna do, what we'll do is then we'll formulate a resolution forming that committee and have Mr. Petty do that so it's all legal and go forward. It's, it's not, we're not, we're not dealing in this rocket science, it's science, it's something we can all work out. And, uh, and we might as well bring the experts in soccer, cause all I know is that most time it's a white and black ball, I think.
Yeah, you'd be surprised.
Oh, they got different colors?
That's okay.
So if everybody's approved, we'll go for it.
I mean, that makes sense, why he's working on construction, we're working on the management and stuff and sort it out.
Okay. A lot's been won. Okay.
So do we, do we make a motion on the committee then, forming the committee, or?
No, it's just unofficial, we don't, it's no action.
Right, 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 right.
All right. Agenda item number fifteen is discussion and possible action on the City of Gaiman operational works.
Okay, well, we have talked around this, uh, several different times. Um, but I would like to see, uh, some, uh, you know, uh, some achievable milestones that we can shoot for. Uh, you know, the old saying, you know, you can get anywhere if you don't have a plan on where you're going. Um, but I'd like to have a, I'd like for us to have a plan on what we wanna see. What would be, and this may be a discussion for more than one meeting, but what do we expect to achieve in two years? What do we, what do we want our community to look like in two years? What do we want our community to look like in five years? What do we want our community to look like in ten years? Um, what are the goals that we are shooting for? Um, we had our task force that we formed, um, and you have been provided the, uh, the recommendations that came out of each one of those task forces. Uh, we, those need to be prioritized. What's, what's, what's gonna be, what's number one on our list of priorities that was brought to us? Um, what's number two? What are, what are some of the things that we wanna get done? We may not have the funds to do them right now, and, but we wanna have them on the table so we can start looking for grants to get them done, uh, or gathering the funds and figuring that out. Um, this just allow us to, you know, have some, you know, some substantial goals that we're working toward. Um, otherwise we're kinda running around going, well, okay, here's the fire of the week, let's go do this. Here's the fire next week, let's go do that. Uh, we just, we're planning year by year, and I'd like to do, I'd like to be more, you know, planning for a ten-year goal. You know, where do we wanna, where do we wanna be in ten years? What do we want our community to look like in ten years? What kind of amenities do we wanna offer citizens of Gaiman ten years from now? Uh, start looking at those long-term goals and what we, what we, uh, want to accomplish. I mean, I think it's in some way, shape, or form, every, we have all set goals for ourselves on where we wanted to be and what we wanted to do, otherwise we wouldn't be there, we wouldn't be where we're at today. And, um, just, uh, I'm looking for guidance on that.
Would you like to have us come with a list to you?
I think to prioritize everything in the task force file, we need to have a workshop within two weeks. We need to plan something. We always talk about having a workshop, we don't have a workshop, so we need to get something together within two weeks to prioritize everything that's been found on the task force.
Well, Sergio, part of the, part of this discussion, I had, Mr. Stravand, I had, it's Mr. Dun, with Mr. Dunham several weeks ago, and the original idea, part of it is, and it can be expanded, was for us to, as a council, discuss goals. And, and part of that goal was for us to set goals that we would like for the city manager and city staff to possibly achieve, so that we have something to go back when we do evaluations for the, for the city manager. So our thought, or my thought was, we'd start out like tonight, we'd say, we wanna look at one-year goals, short-term goals, maybe two-year goals, four-year goals, maybe up to ten-year goals. But we need to give everybody an opportunity for you to, in, as individuals, each council person is an individual, to, to start making a list of your ideas on that. And then Sergio, I agree with you, I'd be, we'd probably figure tonight, in a couple of weeks, to have a workshop, we can incorporate those task force stuff into it. But, uh, then I think we, to me, it's a, it's a pretty simple cut and dry deal. What do we wanna accomplish this year? What do we wanna see accomplished in two years? Do we wanna, what do we wanna prioritize? Uh, we're not writing master's theses or dissertations, we're, we're looking at a long, at a, at a, at a pretty much informal goal, in a way, an informal set of goals, it's not like a strategic plan or whatever. It's just a guideline that's fairly flexible to a point. It also gives us, and it gives us a basis to decide, are we going the direction that we all wanna go? Are we going the way that the citizens would like to see us go? Without making it a big bound in leather document or something like that, I guess is my thought. That's, that's my, that was my thought.
I, I agree a hundred percent. Long-term, short-term goals is what we need. Uh, but I also wanna make sure that we don't move forward without sowing up any of the loose ends that we have.
Well, sure.
Already, of course, but yeah. I mean, that should be.
And it can all be. I can tell you, streets is gonna be on top of that one.
Yeah.
Wherever you go.
Yeah. They oughta be, for all of us.
Yes.
But I think, I think it's something we, something we've talked about, Sergio's right, we've been talking about having work, work sessions, and a lot of times we've had, the few we've had, we haven't really had probably adequate time for each of us to prepare for that. So Joe Don's given us a start on that with the stuff he's sent us, but I think we can all do that individually and then come back and start the process in a, in a group workshop meeting. Does that, does that count?
I think that's the maximum idea, I really think that.
So.
So we can, give us a little bit of time to figure out exactly of the task force, which four we, or rank them, and then what we do wanna see.
And I'd probably suggest, since it's really, uh, that you all, Levona can either call you and check with you, or email Levona and let her know what, what evenings, what evening would work for you, what times would work for you best, uh, for the majority, and then we'll call a special meeting.
And I will say that, um, and I know Councilman Abi has mentioned, within the next two weeks, um, uh, I have committed myself, uh, to go to a, because of my trustee, because I serve as a, on the board of trustees with O M R F, to go to a conference that will, I'll actually have to leave on the twentieth, and I won't be back into the office until the twenty-eighth. So really that, the first opportunity for a meeting I would have for, to go over the, these priorities for a special meeting, would be sometime that first week in June.
Okay. We can talk about that and we'll, we'll get that worked out.
And if we had, uh, if we could work on something and have a, if, if we could have a workshop during that first week of June to, uh, discuss, uh, goals and our priorities, if that's the route we wanted to go, we could certainly get that done and have it brought before the, and have the council.
On the eighth.
On the, the council meeting on the eighth, have, take some formal action on it if we wanted to.
There's enough time.
Yeah.
Yeah. What else? Since we're, since we're sharing. Anybody have anything else on that agenda item, number fifteen?
Nope, sounds like a game plan.
Okay. Uh, we can let action taken then. Agenda item number sixteen is reports from committees, council members, and city managers. So Joe Don, we'll let you go first.
You'll let me go first?
You're right.
All right. Well, the couple of, uh, man, uh, report items, of course, I've been sending you my weekly report. If there's anything that's in that report that you wanna, you have questions about or would like to discuss, please either bring it up or let me know, I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions. Uh, a couple of things that I do wanna bring up right now that are, uh, relatively important and time pressing is, one is our AMR RFP. Um, I've about got that written and ready to go, ready to be submitted. Um, I feel as a, I've worked on that the majority of the last two days. Uh, wanna meet with Tracy and some of my, some of the operational staff tomorrow morning to, uh, iron out some of the fine details of it, but hopefully that'll be ready to, uh, advertise out within the next, uh, within the next week. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about as far as operations is concerned is just to let you know, we have submitted our, uh, our street RFP is out, those plans are on the street. Uh, currently we do, we've only, currently we've only got one bidder, uh, but we are slated to have our, uh, pre-bid meeting tomorrow at two o'clock. Uh, and that'll kinda give us a little, maybe a little bit better idea on who might be interested in bidding the project by their attendance to this meeting. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to that, right, you know, we've got, that, and just as a reminder, we've got, uh, Sunset Lane, East Street.
South of Fifth.
Yeah, North, Northwest Fifth.
Or Northwest.
Northeast Fifth.
Northeast.
Northeast Fifth and, uh, South Fourth Street.
Northeast Fourth, Southwest Fifth.
Northeast Fourth, South.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not up there, I'm just.
Okay. Uh, but we do have those streets, uh, outlined, and, uh, that's what we'll be discussing, that's what our plan is for this year. Um, kinda give you an idea, that, and those are just some of the things that are going on this week that will be, that we should be wrapping up. Uh, to kinda give you an idea about the city financials, um, the general fund, we have collected, uh, seventy percent of our annual budgetary revenue estimates, um, and we're only about thirty-three percent through the year. So we really collected a lot more revenues than what we had anticipated. Uh, some of those revenues are going to be set aside for specific purposes later on, um, and we'll be setting that, or have already started the process of setting that money, those monies aside.
Now, part of that, so is the, what we've gotten from the federal government, isn't it, like the eight hundred and fifty thousand, thousand, isn't that included into that?
Yeah.
Finances of it.
Yeah.
So that's really not a true figure of what we've collected, to me.
Well, well, that, no, that's, that is, that is, that is, that is a true figure of what we collected. We have collected funds that we did not anticipate collecting, that were not budgeted funds.
Right.
And they still remain unbudgeted. So that is the reason we're gonna take that money and set that aside until we have the opportunity to determine what we wanna use those funds for.
Okay.
And hopefully after the meeting, we are, our goal-setting workshop that we have in a few weeks, hopefully we'll have a little clearer idea of what we wanna utilize those funds. Now, I have talked to Lynn about, uh, setting those, setting that money aside. Uh, what we have decided that we needed to do was basically ladder those funds out. So we've got part of the funds invested for six months, part of the funds inve- invested for a year, and part of the funds invested for a year and a half, for two years. So that money, you know, that money will come due in different stages. Now, the idea behind that is, if in six months, when that money comes due, we don't want, and we don't wanna use that money in six months, we don't have any idea of what we're gonna use it for, we'll then take that money that is invest, that is currently invested at six months, and it invested in a two and a half year, uh, instrument. That way we can utilize, and then we'll still have money come and do in six months. And we can always just step it out, and that'll, that'll maximize our investments for those funds. Um, our expenditures out of the general fund is, uh, we've expended about twenty-six percent of what we anticipated, which was a little bit less, about si- about six or seven percent less than if you were spending evenly through the month, through the year, where we would be at. Now, there are some capital items we have not been purchasing, um, that is part of those expenditures. Uh, and there will be some that we, based on actions tonight, we're going to defer even a little bit longer, such as the recharge asset. Uh, if we look at our general fu, our enterprise fund monies, um, again, we're looking at about thirty-three percent through the year. Uh, we have collected about twenty-three percent of our, uh, estimated, uh, revenues, and we, but we've only spent about sixteen percent of our budgeted expenditures. So we're running a little less in revenues than where we would like to have been. Our utility revenues have not been where we would have liked to, to have seen them at from the budget process, uh, that's the big driver for that fund. Um, so, and in converse, we have delayed some of our purchases. Of course, one of our big purchases, or two of our big purchases for that fund is gonna be, um, the AMR me, the AMR, uh, but we, we will be going out for a loan for that, that we have not realized those funds yet. Um, and nor have we nailed down the expenditure of those funds. Uh, then we also have that we have a project we were gonna defer in for later on during the year, uh, maybe starting it, trying to get it, we'll start it next fall, is the construction of water towers. That was about a two-point-five million dollar project. So some of those, you know, we are gonna be lagging behind on some of our, um, operational expenditures that we've been planning. Um, our sales tax is really looking, you know, pretty good. We have, um, over the pa, over this, uh, these past four months, we have, except for January, we have consistently, um, received more sales tax funds than what was received in twenty-twenty. So I think that's a real good indication of our economy is going in the right direction. Uh, people are out spending money more than they were last year at this time. Of course, last year at this time, when we were at the very beginnings of COVID, everybody was scared, everybody was saving their funds, uh, except for toilet paper, they weren't spending a lot of money on stuff. Um, so we're, we're seeing that. We, we do have some, uh, economic development interests going on right now within the city. Um, those are some real good indicators of the, what our econ, that our economy is moving up, uh, and, uh, starting to increase. Uh, use tax is not really in the, is not doing as well as what we would have hoped for it to do. It is about, uh, ten percent less than where we had, where we were at during the same timeframe of, uh, two thousand and twenty. So we've got some ground to make up on that, or we've got some thing, areas to cut back on. Um, again, we did touch on it just a little bit ago, as far as our utility revenues are concerned. Um, we are ahead of where we were at last year. Um, we are ahead of where we were at last year. But we are behind on where we would hope to be this year. So as far as last year's revenues are concerned, we are about seven percent ahead of where we were at last year, which is a good thing. People, you know, they've got, they're using, they're using the gas, they're using their water, some, uh, some things like that. Um, but as far as our budget is concerned, we are a little bit less than where we would like to be at. We have not been, except for the month of April. All of the pre, the previous three months, we didn't hit our target of where we wanted to be at. In April, we over, we, we were about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than what we would have hoped to be at in April. But we are still behind on some, from some of the other months. So we've still got ground to make up. Um. And all in all, those, that would be the report to the, on the financial side of the equation for this month. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that may have brought up.
Questions? Are you other reports from the councilman? It's your chance.
You need to talk about fun stuff now?
No, no, you can't.
Like what's going on in the community?
Well, you can mention that.
Oh, okay. Is that, we do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, so next week, we have a play, a musical going on at the Junior Heights. Been a musical, we haven't done a musical in like two years in the whole city. So the Junior High is doing a musical. If you guys are interested, May twentieth, some of your children will probably be in the show. Um, we also kicked off Fowler Soccer League. So come watch us play. It's entertaining, even if you don't know what's going on, Kim. It's a ball goes in the net, so it's fun.
But they might not use the right color ball. I don't know.
We'll use a black and white ball for Ken. We can do that, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Oh, also, there's a GoFundMe that's going on right now for the community theater right across the street. Because there is some significant damage and some significant upkeep that needs to be done. We need new curtains. They're like falling apart and dwindling. If you've ever been in the community theater in a long time, there's, you can see. You can see the things that need to be fixed. So I'll point you towards the GoFundMe.
All right. Thank you. Well, I am too. Want to thank everybody for coming tonight and, uh, want to thank the, want to thanks Robert Suettenbar for the wonderful work they do with our college rodeo kids. Uh, everybody knows they've had, and Dr. Blanton's in the back taking this all in. He, you know, he's, he, he was going to ride a bull during the college rodeo, but some, the, the bull drew out, turned, didn't want him to ride it. So anyway, we want to thank you all for what you do for Panell State, because what's good for Panell State is good for Gaiman, Oklahoma. And thank you for everything you do with all the rodeo kids. It's been a very trying year for the rodeo team. And, uh, may God bless you and next year be better. With that, we'll stand to drink. You too.
You too, Serge. Uh, well, that's good for you. Well, we could get Coach McMurphy and then his wife, his wife, which is a relationship. That's easy. Lazer, Coach Davidson, I already need. Every day at lunch.